A moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting into order, the Monongahia County Commission, it's July 2nd, 2025, a little after 10:00 in the morning. All three commissioners are present, as is our administrator, Remetta Renetta McClure. We'll start with consent and approval with her. So, good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. You have 59 exonerations to approve for 25,439, 11 minutes for June 18th, 2025, and June 27th, 2025, for the special meeting. Vouchers, General County, 294,694, 66. Cole Severance, 39,331, 10. 911, $75. Chestnut Ridge Park, 9,138, 67. Camp Muffley, 4,003, 14, 85. Mason Dixon Park, 1,003, 58, 40. Mon County Center, 1,004, 38, 03. Recreation Levy, 17,842, 40. Assessors' valuation, 17,979, 17. Star City Tiff, 4,443, 75. ARPA, 257,349, 65. If purchasing card vouchers, General County, 8,739, 20. Camp Muffley, 1,8981. Mason Dixon Park, 1,0771. Mon County Center, 1,131, 84. Assessors' valuation, 95, 45. ARPA, 4,135, for a voucher total of 663,87.69. You have budget revisions that require in-house approval for the general fund, for county commission, circuit clerk, and law enforcement. Position vacancies for your boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for July 2nd, 2025.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
First and second, all in favor. Aye. We have the administrative closure of unprogressed estates.
Yeah, we're just setting a hearing date for the upcoming one. It will be September 17th.
Okay, great.
We need to approve the date. I move to approve the date as presented?
Second.
First and second, all in favor. Aye.
And what was, you said that?
17th, September 17th.
September 17th.
Next, we have introduction to new employees, personnel changes. First, prosecuting attorney, Gabe Musiello here with Kara Bales, for victim witness program coordinator, part-time. So, good morning.
Good morning. We are seeking to hire Ms. Bales. We're excited to bring her into our office. She previously was a forensic interviewer with the Child Advocacy Center and also worked at CASA. And so, we know that she is perfect for the role. As you know, our current victim witness coordinator has been appointed to magistrate here in Monongahia County, which we're also excited about. So Kara will ensure a smooth transition for that office. She will be full-time with a salary discussed in the letter.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Just a quick clarification. I think we just had it on the agenda. We had part-time, but it is full-time.
This is a full-time, grant-funded position with a supplement from the county.
Okay, great. We have first and second, all in favor. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Unfortunately, you'll be real busy.
Next, we have the sheriff. We have a transfer, George Sinclair, transfer from court security to school safety officer.
Yes, sir. The new salary is set for 3,583, 34.
This is another from the grant program from the Board of Education?
Yes, correct.
That's covering the cost?
Yes.
I move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Jimmy Smith from Mecca 911 to introduce a new telecommunicator.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
This morning, I'd like to introduce Jacob Morgan. Jacob can't be with us this morning. He's still fishing out his employment in his old job, but he'll be starting on July 16th at a starting salary of 3,527.85.
Great. Motion to approve?
Move to approve personnel as presented?
Second.
First and second, all in favor. Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
May I apologize?
Sure. Sure.
Kara will be part-time for the first week because the hiring date needed to be the 16th for a full-time position. So let me clarify that she will be working part-time that first week and transition to the full-time position the next week, which is what my letter says.
Can we modify the, do we need to modify the motion, just allow?
Yeah.
But yeah, I move to modify the motion to allow as prosecutor.
Noticing that it's part-time first week and then full-time thereafter.
I apologize. Thank you for that.
Second.
We have first and second for the modification of the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks. Next, we have, we have Assistant City Manager Emily Mazarelli to introduce our new city manager from Morgantown. So please come on up. It's welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll make this short and sweet. We have Jamie Miller, who is our new city manager, and I will let her talk a little bit about her background in working with the city and you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Welcome. Morning, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, commission, for having me here today. Happy to be in Morgantown, in Monongahia County. I'm Jamie Miller. I come most recently from Paris, Kentucky, which is a community right outside of Lexington. Spent most of my career in Port Orange, Florida, which is a community of about 65,000 residents right outside of Daytona Beach. So this is the beginning of week two for me here in Morgantown and thrilled to be here. I do look forward. I'll be brief, just to work closely with the county on our shared priorities and the things that we can work together on. I'm a big believer in collaboration and we can get a lot more done together. So thank you for y'all's time today and happy to be here.
Great, welcome. Thanks for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Welcome. Very nice meeting you.
And point of order, I skipped over comments from the public, so we'll just strike that and reverse it. And we'll now open the comments from the public. At this time, anyone's welcome to come forward. Please state your name, address, and you've got three to four minutes to state what you want to talk about. So please come on up. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Juliette Marlier and I live at 123 Rue Lane, 26508. I was here at the end of May concerning the mid-Atlantic Brazilian sea link that's being proposed to come through our area. And I know that since that time, the commissioners have worked to get some more information and I thank you for that and for going to that meeting on Sunday in Preston County, which I hear was a hot and long meeting, but very informative. So I think we've all learned a lot since then. One thing I learned is that the ratepayers in West Virginia, who would get no benefit from this line, would in fact be subsidizing the line to the tune of $440 million in increased rates over the lifetime of the project. And even the taxes that next era says they would pay would come from the ratepayers, not from the stockholders or investors. But today, I want to try to be brief, but I want to speak about property values because I own with a couple of family members 65 acres on the Rubles Run Backwater of the Cheat Lake. And it's been in my family since my parents bought it in 1959 from Mrs. Daisy Wolf, who was a farmer and a subsistence farmer. And she, by mutual agreement, stayed a couple of years after my parents bought it. So we got to know her and her entire family and that was a great experience. And she taught us about papa's and morels and more things about the land. But we were primarily there for the lake and we never, no one in the family lived there full-time until about 20 years ago, my sister was able to move back. She made a commitment to live here. She built a straw bale house with the help of family and friends. And I was able to come back about six years ago, which was a real privilege because it's hard to live in West Virginia sometimes. So I was able to continue my job and working from home and I knew that the state wanted people to come back. I invested in building a house there. And now I learned that next era would like to, one of the proposed routes comes through the land, slicing through some acreage we had considered for selling it someday for financial reasons, for the younger, especially for the younger owners, for my daughter, who would inherit my share. And it would also come about 200 feet from the new house that I have just completed building. It would cross the Cheat Lake and these are steep sides to the lake. So I think, you know, I see referenced, it might affect property values. Well, of course, it would affect property values. I mean, any one of us can envision buying something and having a transmission line or not next to it. So I think that's kind of a no-brainer. It's hard to find what the actual amount would be. But basically, it would ruin the land for that reason, but also for my personal reasons. I made a commitment to come back here, build a house. I do forest farming. I grow ramps and medicinal plants. So the area that they are proposing to come through would tear through the woodland where I do those things. It would wipe out the hickory trees that harbor, that provide shelter for endangered bat species. And it would make it, in my mind, it would just make it unlivable. And so then I would be confronted with, you know, getting a lawyer and getting something close to the money that it deserves for wrecking my property for my own uses. And it would also ruin the habitat that I have worked to, I'm a steward of the land, you know? And I've worked hard to maintain a habitat for native species. And now I want to just briefly state what I contribute economically by living there. I pay taxes. When I moved here, I just retired recently, but I had a pretty good job and my taxes were going to West Virginia and my property taxes still do and my social security taxes. I hire local contractors. I patronize local businesses. I personally promote tourism in the state. I invite friends and, you know, family. I have extended family coming this week from the west coast, some of them, because they value the land. They have, you know, it's a continuation. Some of them would be my parents' great-grandchildren who are coming here. So we have a deep emotional stake and a financial stake. And we are cultural stake. You know, here I am, still teaching West Virginians about papa's because I knew Mrs. Daisy Wolf. And it also, even for people whose property is not directly threatened, it would still change the nature of our community. It would bring an industrial installation through a community that's cohesive.
Well, we, we're going a little bit over time.
Yeah, can I just make one more point?
Sure, sure.
So I did a little investigation about what insurance these companies would have to pay. And a friend who is in that business said that the next generation or next era would have to buy liability insurance that would include a significant amount that would include injury of persons and damage to property, including pollution from maintenance and construction vehicles. And all this would be taking place on the banks of the Cheat Lake. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for the information. Very much for coming in. Anyone else come with some public? Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jackie Meyer. I'm a neighbor of Julie's. And I spoke to some of you last week against the same issue, the power line coming through our back door. And I've lived there since late 70s, so over 30 years, raised my daughter. Mr. Bloom knows her very well, as an educator. And she works for a watershed, the Friends of Deckers Creek watershed, which comes through Morgantown. So we live above the Cheat Lake watershed, the Lower Cheat Lake. And this power line, which is not extracting power from West Virginia, but from Pennsylvania to Virginia, will come through my backyard. Currently, we have a power line. I cannot see it. It's down the hill. And already, when they have to spray for the power line, they actually cannot spray on my property. They have to cut the trees manually because they decimated my raspberry patch a couple of years ago. So, and they're very good about it. They come and manage it, park in my front yard. But this new power line will be 25 feet higher, 20 to 25 feet higher. It will be 45 by 45 feet base. It will be 100 feet cleared on each side. That's 200 more feet because they're not, they're going to go beside the current power line. 200 more feet of my trees, my property, my West Virginia income will be gone. It's going to go over the dam. So we're already promoting tourism in our state. We love our park. I kayak. I go down the hill, I kayak. And that is now going to have a power line over. And my understanding is we are trying to promote tourism in West Virginia, not decimate it. So bringing the trucks up, we've already done with the trucks on our hill, our very steep hill that is really more of a riverbank. Will, we already did that with Route 43. Okay, that's all done. That's years ago. It's, the land has sort of gotten back to where it was and I do not want that happening again. I do not see any benefit for this power line. I think if they put in data centers in West Virginia, it should go in the strip mines, not in Davis, other pristine areas where we're trying to attract tourism. And I'm hoping to get your support opposing this power line in our county. So that's basically it. My daughter is very concerned. As I said, she works for a watershed because they're going to destroy a lot of the native plants that are here already. West Virginia has a booming, I'm working for a master naturalist. She is a master naturalist. We have a booming, we're known for our native plants in West Virginia. And so we're going to tear them up and Friends of Cheat has worked so hard to clean up the Cheat Lake. When I first came here in the 70s, my hair was like straw when I went swimming. You know, Deckers Creek was orange. I mean, they've worked all over to clean up our rivers. And now what are we going to do? We're going to put in big power lines and they're going to pollute the rivers. Anyway, the other thing is I believe some of those big power lines are related to cancer. So we're going to be close to them now, closer than we were before, and I'm not comfortable with that. So as a retired nurse, I'm very concerned about that. So anyway, I'm hoping we can convince you all to look at this closely and not support this power line.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate your time. Anyone else for comments? You can't see behind the pillar, but, all right, with that, then we'll close comments from the public. Move on, Colleen Coon. Do you have any grants? No. Moving on to correspondence. We have receipt of application from Kevin Trimbus for appointment to the Monongahia County Planning Commission. Pretty self-explanatory. Any correspondence other than that?
Just one other, excuse me, one other item. A letter of support for Morgantown Community Resources. Hazel's House of Hope is submitting an affordable housing program application for an expansion of beds at MCR. So I'll submit that back to Terry Cutright, who requested it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Of course, if a normal procedure is a coming out of the cycle. If there's unanimous approval for it, it's signed by the president and we bring it up in correspondence, so.
Great. Any correspondence for you, Sean?
Yeah, I do have one piece of correspondence, Renetta. I did put in a folder. In our, my Comcast project update last week, Comcast has announced a new pricing and I asked them to forward the information. Basically, they're restructuring all of their pricing offerings. So I think they used to have like five or six tiers. Now they have like two or three, so it's a lot less confusing and.
Just for internet?
Yeah, for internet service. So I forwarded the email and I just wanted to put the word out. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of advertisement and stuff, but again, I just wanted to make sure that our public was aware.
Great. Any correspondence, Tom?
I'll bring it under my reports.
Okay. No more correspondence. Moving on, no unfinished business on the new business. Consideration to approve requisition number 106 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for 4,000, excuse me, 4,636, 25. And that is Munichap's monthly invoice for their work on the district.
Move to approve requisition 106 for the UTC Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, consideration to approve requisition number 24 for the University Town Center Series 2023A Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for 5,137, 78. Again, that's Munichap invoice.
5,022, 50 at Munichap. There's a software system.
I'm sorry, yes.
So 115, 28. Anyhow.
Thank you for the clarification.
Requisition 24 for the UTC Series 2023A Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor? Next, consideration to approve the request by Sheriff Todd Forbes regarding awarding the service weapon to First Sergeant Alan Ayersman upon retirement effective June 30th, 2025. This is a standard.
Move to request. I mean, move to support.
It's a standard request when a long-serving deputy sheriff is retiring, so.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we thank Sergeant Ayersman for his service. Next, consideration of an appointment to the Board of Directors of the MON Defender, Inc., formerly known as 17th Judicial Circuit Public Defender Corporation.
The applicant was Emma Comas. She, I believe, is employed with Healthrate. Recommended by the Public Defender, or the MON Defender, Inc. Now it is known for appointment, so.
I move to approve the appointment of Emma Comas to the Board of Directors as requested.
Second.
This was the reappointment as our prior appointee was the bar then appointed, I believe.
Correct.
So they were just shifting, shifting the appointees. So we have first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, to consider for approval, the service agreement with West Virginia Network for County Commission email, virus, and spam filtering for fiscal year 26.
This is just a continuation of an annual agreement that we've had in place for several years now. The annual charge is $3,000.
Move to approve the agreement as presented?
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, consideration to approve fiscal year 2026 budgets for minor funds. We have 911, which is 07, Chestnut Ridge Park, 13, Camp Muffley, 021, Mason Dixon Historical Park, 022, Mon County Center, 023, and Parks and Recreation Levy, 033.
I move to approve the budgets as presented?
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, consideration to approve grant applications for the Monongahia County Opioid Settlement Fund for fiscal year 26.
I move that we separate the grant application in a group of five and then a group of one. And the five being Jacob's Ladder, Lawrence Wish, Liberia, Mon County Health Department, MON Emergency Medical Services, and Wise Path Recovery Center with the approved rates.
Do you want to state what those are?
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess that helps.
Well, Commissioner Bloom's concern is that he's on the Board of Directors of one of the organizations. So I, as Tom has indicated, he wanted to approve six of the seven that we had indicated. That total, total value of those six, not indicating the individual amounts yet because we got to send them notification to make sure they accept because not all of them were fully funded. I think three of the seven were fully funded. So that amount is an amount of 3,94, 900. So I would second Commissioner Bloom's request to fund those six organizations as applied.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Then I would make a motion to approve the additional funding application in the amount of $60,000.
I'll second.
And I assume, for the record, Commissioner Bloom is abstaining from that vote.
Do you want to say who it is?
And that is with Morgantown Area Use Services Project.
Okay. The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. So to be clear, the six were Jacob's Ladder, Lawrence Wish, Liberia,
Mon County Health Department, MON EMS, and Wise Path. The total requested for those organizations was 6,900, $690,667. And as I indicated, the amount that we are approving was 3,94, 900. In total, we had 767 requested and we approved 454,900. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Yes.
Which is about 60% of what was requested, but we did, of the seven, we'd had seven applications and we approved at least partial of all of them.
Yes.
And then we'll have another application window early next calendar year, right? Is that normally when we do it or?
Not for opioid grants.
Okay, that's just be the.
Just for regular grants.
Okay. Next, we have a report from elected officials and department heads. Andrew Gasprey, our county planner, regarding the recent flooding in the Willidell area, Acorn Village. Welcome, Andrew. Good morning.
Welcome. Thank you. Good morning. I wish I had nothing but roses and light, but it's been a rough year for flooding. So I wanted to kind of give a brief context. I have more information for you that I'll provide on a memory stick with pictures, et cetera, but I'm going to do a 10,000-foot view because I think it's easier to understand.
Great.
A property was asked to be rezoned, to be consistent with its immediate neighbors, the neighborhood history of flooding, and they had other issues. They questioned it. Long story short, there was an amendment that this application for rezoning, and I point out that it was from roughly, depending on geometry, up to maybe 20 houses now. Gets zoned to allow up to 30 houses. Okay, so I'll come right back to that. This amended plan, though, included stormwater management to help address the historic flooding issues of the neighborhood, which the county commission graciously supported because it required a work with MUB, et cetera, to kind of create some additional capacity to handle floodwater in that area. The applicant cannot build homes until that is addressed. However, they still have to build the stormwater management facilities. And unfortunately, it's been a very wet and challenging year to do that. And they were in the process of building that when we had an exceptionally hard event that hit them three inches in 20 minutes of rain. And it was overwhelmed. The neighborhood was flooded. I have pictures of that, the adjacent neighborhood. But unfortunately, I have been coordinating with lots of people on this and it's my understanding from MUB and DEP that the flooding would have happened anyway. It would have been different. Instead of here, it's here. But it still would have been an area that's flooded. It's sad, but there was nothing really that can be done. The applicant that is building this has followed all the requirements by law and then some. I'll talk about that in a minute, but unfortunately, it wasn't built in time. Since then, it has been completed and it has been preventing any of the additional rains that have been coming. I have pictures of that and it has been retaining that water and successful in that. It's just been a shame up till then. The challenge now, as I see it, is, you know, it's unfortunate. We've tried to address the neighborhood's concerns because it is funding that should be accessible through the state for that flooding. But this particular project, I think, needs to move forward now. They built the retention area. Now, the other complaint that I alluded to is they want it green and everybody wants it green, including the applicant. And I think that's the next step. They're willing to work with the neighbors to green this up. They moved the wall back two feet in order to allow bigger trees in there to kind of create a nice tree wall and green this area up. And I'm hoping that to coordinate with that effort with the neighboring community to kind of put in the kind of forested area to cover this stormwater retention infrastructure that has been put in there. And I have, the applicant and some of the neighbors are willing to work there, but we are trying to coordinate all the interested parties henceforward. That's really my view of it for now. I can go into much more detail. I've got a lot more of this information here that I'm going to provide to Colleen for you. going to provide to Colleen for you as a resource, but I'm happy to answer any questions if I was unclear about something or what happened.
And just to be clear, the reason we asked you to come up and to explain this is because we've had, we've heard, had a lot of correspondence from those, from those neighbors that were flooded, and, you know, one of the questions they ask is, hey, you know, you guys, you guys approved this project, we asked you back then who's going to be looking out for us, and we are. And every question that's been asked about this project, I've immediately forwarded to Andrew and I've said, Andrew, can you look into this complaint? Can you look into this concern? And we've done that every step of the way. I even reached out to, to the other entities that have jurisdiction over sediment and erosion control in this area, and both have indicated that there was, that they've investigated and there's no basis for issuing any notice of violations. So, it is unfortunate. It's, obviously, if the project was done quicker, it would have alleviated some of the flooding. It may not have alleviated at all when you're talking about 100-year floods in specific pinpointed areas, and that's the thing, it wasn't like it was across all of our areas, it was in specific areas that got a lot of that downpour. And as you indicated, it was about a rate of about three inches an hour, they got two inches over that whole hour. So, it was unfortunate, and we have, back then, when we had the hearing for, and it was probably one of the most longest hearings we've had, we heard every single concern, and we approved, conditionally approved, the development of significant impact. With the correlation, listen, you're going to follow every, every one of these steps, and that's why we reached out to you, has the developer followed all of those steps, and you have indicated they have. Other, other entities that have jurisdiction over this have indicated that there is, there was no violations, it was simply a problem with timing. And I appreciate you doing that other step to reach out and provide information in regards to people that, you know, where you can go, or how, you know, what you can do to try to get funding for this. And the other part of that, you meant, you touched on it, when this project happened, the County Commission brokered a deal with the developer and with MUB to do an extra step to build in some stormwater retention. And we came in as an equal partner with MUB and got the developer to throw money into it, and we agreed to that, and the project actually came in twice the cost, and MUB stepped up and took the rest of, the rest of that cost on. So, we have been, we have concerns for this area, we've been working to address the problems in this area, it's just honestly, and again, that's, that's no consolation when you're, you know, replacing your flooring or, you know, throwing stuff away that got flooded. But we, we have been on top of this project through our planning office and through communications with us, and there, it just simply was a, you know, an issue of timing.
It is unfortunate, but again, you have to build the thing and it takes time to build it, so it is a challenge. I would say that I am encouraged, though, they were able, and unfortunately, you can't have it quite both ways, they've increased the capacity of that retention because of the extreme nature of that event. They had, they, it would have contained the three-inch downpour, but they've now built it to withstand four inches, which added a little height to that reservoir they, they've put because flooding is getting worse over time, and I, I think that's something that has been cooperative, that the developer has done, because no one would have expected the three inches in 20 minutes that DEP cited in this particular instance. So, I think we are trying to address the future as much as we can, and in that context, you know, it's not done, the MUB has to put in those trunk lines along Oak Court, et cetera, but in the interim, that water is being processed on-site in a, in a preemptive way so that this won't happen again.
Again, from the beginning, I'm going to go, I don't want to, I want to be clear, the developer is the BFF family, and Dave personally has shown me to have, show an interest in making, doing the right thing for this area. You know, developers get a lot, get bashed for a lot of things, but in regards to this project, Dave has personally assured me that, that, you know, he's trying to do the right thing. So, I do want to thank Dave for any additional steps that he's taken that you're indicating, and even being part of this process, being part of the MUB project, which wasn't part of the King's Court project. So, that was additional and above and beyond that he agreed to be part of, to just be a good corporate, or a good neighborhood partner.
And for clarification, I'm pretty sure the city of Morgantown also put in a million dollars, was that not...
Well, you're talking about the Popeye...
But, but part of a project connected to, yeah, that whole area.
They are, they are related, yes.
Yeah, they are related, but I did want, you know, since you were...
That, that, that project, we, MUB, and...
Right.
City Morgantown each put a million in to...
Right.
To do the Popeye project, which all feeds into this.
Exactly.
And then we did another, the other project I'm talking about was about a $400,000 project. Again, like I said, I think it came in like 700,000, and MUB agreed to step up and handle what, you know, the additional that we had already agreed to, so... Thanks needs to be provided to all those organizations addressing this.
And I beg, you know, you, you brought it up, so unfortunately, you're dealing with a planner here. We're looking at the future because they hope to take this system uphill from that, and we've been planning for that with the adjacent neighborhood to the east that is uphill from it, the Tanglewood, now I'm just, now I'm blanking on it, but the, I mean, the neighbor...
Acorn Village and Tanglewood.
Next to Acorn Village.
Tanglewood.
Tangle, yeah.
You were right.
You were right. As, as they go through, so we've been anticipating the future so that hopefully we'll be able to do a better piecemeal job as we go and improve the drainage for the entire area because, as Commissioner Bloom mentioned, it's, it's all related.
Yeah.
You have to have a place for the water to go.
Well, the Popeye project's huge in helping that as well, so that's...
Yes, thank you for your report, we do appreciate it.
We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, reports from County Commissioners, Tom?
Sure. First, I don't, can I call you Jamie or Jamie Miller, but welcome. I'm very, very, very excited that you're here in not only the city of Morgantown, but Montague County. I also want you to know that you have Emily next to you that has a wealth of information, and I think it's real important to know where we were, where we are now, and the future which you're going to be a part of. And I've had an exceptional relationship with Emily, we don't always agree, but I can tell you, I've called and she responds immediately, and it's been probably the only person in the administration there that has done that in years, and I, and I really appreciate that. With that being said, I'm going to ask for the first cooperative request. Can you find out when Healthrate is going to move? We have asked, and Emily has been kind of filling, but this is a lot of money that the city and the county has put in, and there's very little confirmation or feedback, and I believe it's very important for both the city and the county to know this. So, if you could find that out, really be appreciative of that. I mean, that's an easy, the second thing is, I look forward to meeting you privately and discussing some issues, but I think if we can get that one, that's the first one that is important to both the city and the county, so I appreciate that. Second, I received a phone call right before the meeting, I had called Jonathan Board, the Executive Director of First Foundation, on behalf of the County Commissioners, to find out, they announced that the produced settlement was with municipalities. They did not mention the word counties. I did find out that that, they are going to clear that up today. So, counties are also involved in receiving funds on that settlement, so that's important. And the third issue, and it's in today's paper, and I thought Ben did a great job, I know the citizens are very frustrated with the intersection at Exit 155 going on Chaplain Hill. I don't think there was any one more than the three of us that continually push to get those temporary lights put up. The good news is, I feel, I believe there is a whole new group of transportation superintendent, the locals, and everyone's working together, and I believe they understand the severity. But I again want to state, this is an F-minus intersection. There is no worse intersection in this state than this, and it's bad. And I am a little worried that now it's been moved back two years and possibly to, whoops, to December. We really need to try and get this done before football season. They've known for two years what to order, and I hope it can be done, and I'm looking forward to the new superintendent. I say it in a very positive manner. Thank you. Carefully.
Before I start, we do have, we did have one piece of correspondence, and I've been reaching out to the governor's office. I haven't had the official proclamation yet, but there, it's, it's been all over the news that the governor has declared tomorrow, tomorrow additional holiday, so this, this commission needs to take that, that action. Again, I don't have the proclamation in place, so, but we can, we...
Pending receipt of the proclamation.
Yeah, because the proclamation always gives us, always gives us the authorization to flow it.
He, he did not call it a holiday, I'm sorry. He did not call it a holiday, he called it an additional day off.
Okay.
So, what does that mean?
So, that hurts us a little bit because the proclamation needs to state that the counties can take advantage of the additional day off.
Yeah.
But because it's not a declared holiday, it binds you all a little bit.
Okay, well, again, I just got a text that she'll get it to me as soon as possible.
So, they are working on a proclamation?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, pending receipt of that proclamation, or contingent on receipt of that proclamation, I would move that the, the County Commission grant tomorrow off as an additional day off in accordance with the governor's, the governor's direction.
Fuck, okay, second.
We have first and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Okay, I almost forgot about that. I had it in my notes, but, you know, we'll get that out as soon, we'll, we'll send an official notification out through our notification system as soon as we get the proclamation.
Hopefully, it includes the language that we need, but yes.
If not, then we'll have to...
Well, we'll, we'll have to have an emergency meeting and figure that out.
Yeah.
But in regards to my schedule, since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had two, I had the Frontier project update and hope to have some really good progress towards the end of summer, and which actually, they'll be starting to sign people up. Friday, we had staff reports, and then I had my broad, Comcast broadband tag up, so both projects are moving forward. We have now a year and a half, 18 months to complete those projects, so there is light at the end of the tunnel. Both projects expect to have, be able to have people signing up by the end of the year, so it's not going to be projects done and then people sign up, it will be as, areas are connected, then they'll be able to, they'll, they'll be able to sign up and be connected. Sunday, Commissioner Arnett and I did attend the public meeting in Preston County. Really appreciate all the work by Beth Bosio in pulling together all those speakers. It was very well-attended, there was probably, I don't know, 100, 100?
Probably 100 people.
There was about 100 people there, all very respectful and just wanting information, addressing their concerns. Again, it was very useful to me to really kind of gather information about what the project is and, and how it would affect our area. This, yesterday, the administrator and I had our bi-weekly?
Monthly.
Monthly call with Align HR. Today's a regular day, I do have our solar project RFP at the Mond County Center, 11:30. So, that's moving forward. Tomorrow, as I indicated, is an additional day off for our employees, so, and Friday is the fourth, so enjoy your well-earned holiday weekend. Tuesday, back at it with a Juma tag up, and I have a few other meetings in regards to our Exit 155 project, but hopefully, we'll be providing some additional information in regards to that project, too. Overall, Happy New Year, so we're in a new, new, new fiscal year. Welcome, look forward to working with you. You have some big shoes to fill, I've, I've worked a lot with Kim, I've looked, worked a lot with Emily, and I look forward to, you know, all, all the things we can work on going forward, so welcome. You have some big shoes to fill, but we're looking forward to working on a lot of, a lot of different things together. That's all I have, Jeff.
Great, and I like that sentiment, welcome, look forward to working with you. Last week, I had the privilege of attending the Quota Club of Morgantown celebration of providing AEDs to schools, to, we have four in our buildings, in various different buildings and agencies across the county. It was a brainchild of the late Alan Lindemuth, who was a magistrate here in town, and with the help of many in the community, it's, it's had a successful run so far, and they continue to provide those to groups that, and areas of need to, you know, help save lives when needed. As Commissioners, of course, said, we did attend the New Era presentation, it was a, it was, it was solely on the side of opposition, which was obviously the side that we needed more information on, and while we haven't made any decisions, or we'll be discussing it, next time we have our staff reports, I personally was surprised that the presentations that have been made offer not a singular benefit to West Virginia. It, it's kind of shocking, actually, that they aren't even offering substations that we could tie into and provide power to our citizens, it's just simply a pass-through, but we'll be, that's just my, my take on it as one Commissioner, but we'll be, we'll be discussing that in the future, and thank you for coming in and providing information that, and concerns that you have. We had a board meeting for the Advisory Board for Camp Muffley last evening, John was on the call as well. The park's doing very well, we just finished our four-age camps out there, it was very well-attended, record attendance. Becca Fent Clark does an incredible job putting those camps on for the kids, and the grounds are looking great, our, we have some newer maintenance employees that are really doing a great job with the, with the foliage and keeping things clean and together. If you haven't had an opportunity, please go out and visit the park and our other parks as well. Yesterday, I attended the very beginning of a meeting hosted by Jimmy Smith and our 911 Mecca Center for people of like, like organizations from all around several states and from, some from pretty far away, just to, it was an information, informational meeting, and I'm sure they shared all kinds of new ideas and what was going on around. We have an incredible facility up on that hill, it was the, the brainchild of Jimmy and his staff and working with us, we got that thing built. We are actually designated as the Regional Command Center for any major crises in this area. It's, it's a very well-regarded building, and, and it's also a testament to our staff up there for how well it's being run, so thank you for having me out there, and sure, it was very, it went really well. And I think that is all I've got. Happy Fourth, and I hope everyone has a safe holiday weekend, and when I see you, when we drove up to the lake on Sunday, I saw the dive team in the parking lot, and my heart got a little, luckily, they, they were, at least here, there was a problem in Tigert, but luckily, here, it was just, must have been exercises just on standby, so there was no, as far as I'm aware, there was no, there were no incidents that required the use of the dive team for that, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
We are gone.